Good evening. Thanks for coming out. It is anticipated that the Eldred Central School District Board of Education will discuss the bond hearing, public hearing and notice as presented. This meeting is a special meeting for the bond. No other business will come before the board tonight. There will be no executive session or nothing. This is strictly for the bond. Now I turn this meeting over to Tracy.
Hi, I'm just going to give a short presentation and every once in a while I'll turn it over to Caleb to also answer questions and to explain. So the first thing with our bond, what we are proposing is facility upgrades, renovations at both buildings. Eldred Junior Senior High School, George Ross McKenzie Elementary School. These improvements and these upgrades will support our students' achievement in literacy, in math, in science, multimedia, and also with sports. Now these improvements, we will show that they will inspire students' analytical thinking and problem-solving skills. With 21st century education, we want to ensure that our students have those critical thinking skills, those problem-solving skills, because that's problem-based learning, that's real-world learning. This will also enhance our communication, collaboration, and innovation. And again, it's all those shun words, but it's what our students need for the 21st So this is with financing, and this will be with Caleb.
I didn't realize we were getting there that quick. Okay. So a little clip on my microphone broke. So going forward, so we were looking at the total cost of the project being no more than $13,295,000. Now, that does not mean that we're going to spend $13,295,000. That means that's the maximum amount that the voters are authorizing. As it stands, the current estimate is $12,485,000. But you have to have a little bit of wiggle room in there because there's always change orders, there's unforeseen circumstances that happen. The actual construction of this bond project is not going to start until at least at the earliest summer of 2024, the major construction. So things will change in that period of time, inflation, things like that. The bond itself, so the borrowing is $12.04 million. So the school is willing to kick in up to $1.25 million in reserves. That's the maximum we're willing to kick in. As of right now, it would only be $400,000. We have built up over $4 million in reserves, so we do have the reserves there to put towards this capital project if need be, and still have a safe cushion. So it won't put us back into the situation we were in before. We'll still have a nice cushion there. Again, we say 17 years, that's the maximum length that this bond will be. If it can be, we will do a 15-year bond. But the 17 gives us the flexibility because we want to do this project right. We don't want to find out that we're $200,000 short, and so we build something that is not going to last or is not going to fulfill the needs that we want it to. So on the finance, that's what we know right now. And back to Tracy.
Well, it's still with you. But the biggest thing with this is taxes will not increase due to these projects.
That's right. It will be replacing, so the bond payment that is coming off, our last payment of which will be 24, 25, will be replaced in an equal amount by the new one, taking into account state aid. So the net cost that the public has to pay is going to be the same as the current bond that we're about to pay off. So we won't be raising or lowering taxes. It will be tax-neutral, is what they call it. So there won't be any increase in your taxes due to doing these projects.
And like it says, the first payment is starting June of 2026.
Yes, on the new bond, the first payment will be June 2026, which is why we have to start now, so that construction is done and right around when we pay off our other one.
Let me just take a minute. I wanted to let everybody know that Dr. Morgano is with us tonight. He's zooming. Sorry, Dr. Morgano. I forgot to mention that to you there. He left us in June. Tracy took over, but he said he would stay on, help us with the bond, so he's with us tonight, zooming in. Thank you, Dr. Morgano.
Thank you.
Sorry, Tracy.
All right, planned upgrades and improvements. So the biggest thing for George Ross McKenzie is we have to replace that roof. The roof is, the original roof is near the end of its useful life. In some areas of George Ross McKenzie, there are more patches than the original roof. So that is number one, it's got to have a new roof. And then for, we also include new sidewalks at George Ross McKenzie, and that's again for safety reasons, for ADA compliance, and so that will help there. We're also looking at for new facilities, the athletic fields, the all-weather football field and track. We actually have with Felinsor, they brought samples of the turf. That, once the presentation over, you can go check out the turf and the materials that will be used. Oops, sorry. Also, this would replace the bathrooms. So our bathrooms, as you can see, they're old. They are questionably ADA compliant. This would bring them up to code.
They're also not actual total buildings. They're like a lean-to structure. You could actually throw stuff over the top to go outside.
So what we would do, this is one of the renderings, is the concessions restroom building on the left, and then a possible, like a renderings of the dugout for the baseball field on the right. And with the concessions in the restroom building, you know, we haven't had concessions. So this would add to the athletic facilities, it would add to the community being able to enjoy and not have to go to Dollar General, get food, then come up. They could actually do it here. And there's actually shelter, so that yesterday I was at the modified football game, and beautiful double rainbow, the skies opened up, and there was no place to go. So luckily, I have a hairdryer in my office, because I was soaked. We would, now originally, we have this hill that overlooks the field, and that was where, that's where we're going to put the seating at, so we're able to go into that hill. And again, ergonomically speaking, it just looks cleaner. It is not, right now, we have bleachers that are on top of the hill, and you know, there's no backs to the back of the bleachers, and it just, I think it looks cleaner if we could put it into the hill.
Almost looks like it was built for it.
Yes. So we do have the rendering over there also, so after the presentations, you can take a closer look. But it would be the all-weather field, and it would be six-lane track. We would also include things like the high jump, a water pit for the steeplechase, it would have the long jump, the triple jump. We would actually have the shot put and the discus up there. We're also looking at reorientating the baseball field. Currently, our home plate is over here, and then we would move it to where first base is. That would put it in correction with kind of like the sun for players. And also, it adds feet, so that, because you have to have a certain number of clearance for line drives and home runs. That would actually give us a way to protect the field, protect over here, because they would be heading towards the trees. So the other part is, we are looking at ADA for parking up there, because right now, if you've ever been up to the fields, it is a steep hill. If you are even, because one of our teachers currently has a boot, she can't even walk up that hill. So at least then it'd be more ADA compliant, more community could come and enjoy the events. Now, what we're looking at for both schools, libraries, when I went to school, it was a library, it was a room full of books. Now they are considered to be learning centers, and that's what a lot of schools have adopted. They are multipurpose, multimedia-use spaces because of devices. You have computers in your hands, they're called cell phones. So everybody has a computer, and a lot of times you can access reading materials online and digital copies. So we're looking at these global learning centers to be multipurpose. So you can have study areas, you can have group areas, you can have small conferences, and it again lends to that problem-based learning and analytical thinking skills. So these are the two pictures. This is McKenzie, and then we have here on the third floor, Junior Senior High School. And for these, we're not looking, we're looking more at rearranging with the furniture and the space. We would still keep, our argument is, we still have to keep the beautiful parquet floors, because that's original to the building, that's not getting moved. But what we're looking at with both of those, so for the junior high school building, Junior Senior High School, the library, we would actually have a suspended screen that could come down from the ceiling and go back up. And then all of this furniture is mobile, it's, they call it flexible furniture. They can be moved in whatever organization the teacher wants. We would actually have a small, like hub for our librarian. And then again, you've got that collaborative areas, you could even have where students have areas for independent studying, or they could have like a reading circle, things like that. At George Ross McKenzie, we are also looking at not only renovating the library, but looking at creating a makerspace. The makerspace leads to that problem-based learning, it is critical thinking skills. And again, we're looking at flexible seating. So right now, we would have, we have the wall down, and we're looking at like doors to be able to open it, so that this is very fluid, or to close it, so you can have two different classrooms. And again, it's the seating for multi, for the makerspace. And a makerspace is basically what we would call, if there's 3D printing, if there is, basically, it looks like the design process. And it's about creating independent thought to solve problems. So this would be at McKenzie, and again, it would be, the construction would begin in 2024 and be concluded in 2026. So a couple of questions that we've been asked, and I'm going to go back to Caleb, because one of the questions you will get asked is, why is there going to be no increase on our taxes? How can that be?
Well, there'll be no increase on taxes due to the bond. So what will happen is, essentially, it's just going to take the place of existing debt. Our balance sheet is pretty good, we only have one current existing bond. Right now, the current payment on that is $1.2 million. This one will be a little bit less, but we're also going to get a little bit less in state aid. So the portion of it that the public has to pick up will be the same. It's about $650,000 a year is what the public picks up. And that's going to be the same all throughout the 15 years. To stretch it to 17 years, what ends up happening is they drop that, the last two payments, because you can structure a bond however you'd like. They can structure the last two payments at just 650, because the state will give you your aid over 15 years, no matter what you do. They don't care if it's a 17-year bond or not.
So why, why do we have to have a bond vote? You know, again, this goes where the school district budget that residents vote on every year does not include those discretionary funds that we need to do the upgrade on facilities. So that's why we have to have the bond vote. A regular school district budget just has our operations budget, it does not have any of the discretionary funds. And again, we're saying that, you know, the amount being borrowed through this would be $12.04 million. It again would not increase your taxes. Big question, why are we replacing the football field and track? In the recent years, and I would say five to seven years, one-third of home sports events, they have been canceled due to unsafe conditions. And you know, with a new all-weather football and soccer field, one, the soccer field would be regulation, it wouldn't go onto the track. And then our football, we're doing eight-man football, it's also regulation, and we can host bigger events, like we can have track meets here. Right now, our track team has to travel for every single event. So it'd be great to have more of a community hub. Plus, you know, the track and field, especially for the track, you know, it's beautiful weather up there, and it would be nice to be able to, the community to say, use our track, walk. And you know, I said it kind of earlier, why are we doing concessions and facilities? Well, you saw a picture of the bathroom, they need to be upgraded, we need ADA compliance, and they're just, they don't meet the needs of our community. And with concessions, it is nice to have the fact of, you could get, you don't have to go to Dollar General or Pex, you could get it there. And it creates, with concessions and with the bathrooms, it does create a hub, and that's what we're looking at, a community facility that is the hub of the area.
Yeah, it really opens itself up to holding other kinds of events there.
And then, you know, if you want to register to vote, this is on our website, and there's a link there that you can click, and then that gets you to the Sullivan Department or County of Sullivan and their elections. So we are going to hold the vote on Tuesday, December 6th. It will be in here, and the vote will be from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. If there's any questions, you can always reach out to me. And again, on our website, which, our new website launched today, it is now available, and all the information for the bond is actually on the new website. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay. So I'm just going to piggyback on a few things that Tracy and Caleb touched on already. So I talked to the athletic director here, J.J. Gast, and I believe it was last year or the year before, we canceled 11 events here that we couldn't do anything with. Number one, that field we use up there is used for everything. We're not a big school where we have a modified field, they can play on one field, you know, a football can play on one field, the varsity boys and varsity girls soccer can play, we don't have that, we don't have that luxury of that, okay? So that field gets used for everything, it gets used for practice, you know, some schools have a practice field. We don't have that luxury. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at the turf that we're looking at, because of the drainage and stuff, and you'll be able to use it after it rains or in the rain, you'll be able to use that, okay? So that's, because it becomes a mud pit at times, and it becomes unsafe, as Tracy said. As far as the use of the track right now, it's unusable. It's cracked up in the back corner, looking down at the field in the left corner, it's broke right off. The retaining wall is starting to fall down, and it's just, it's unsafe and unusable. We don't want the public up there walking around, and we definitely don't want our kids running on it. So that part of it's, if the bond doesn't go through, that trap will not be able to be used at all. It's not being used now, okay? Bathrooms, I will tell you what I experienced last Friday night. You couldn't stand the smell, standing around where the road goes down to the lower field or this side of the field. It was horrible, from the sewer smell, and it was coming out of the bathrooms. So you know, that's something that has to be addressed to. I'm sure anybody that was at that game, that stood at that end, could, you know, you could smell it, you know?
Smell it the next day, too.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, the field, that whole part up there needs to be, needs to be dealt with, as does our roof in McKenzie. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the taxes, that is why we are going for a $12.000 budget, because we don't want to impact our taxpayers any more than they are. The $17 million bond is coming off, and Caleb could explain it better, but with interest rates and the way things are going now, we couldn't do that. So that's why we went back to the drawing board, and we come to this conclusion of doing this, so it wouldn't be an impact on taxes. So when this new board administrator took over, that was our main goal, as Dr. Morgano, I come on about the same time Dr. Morgano did, and that was one of our biggest goals, was not to impact the taxpayers. And we've done a pretty good job so far. I've been here four years, I'm in my fifth year, and we're trying to withhold that and, you know, keep that going. Does any other board member want anything, have anything to say?
I did have a question for Caleb, in regards to the 15 versus 17-year bond options.
Yep.
If we go with the 17-year just to improve our cash flow, can we advance maturity? Should we decide that we want to pay it off earlier?
Legally, I mean, yeah, you can. There'll be callable bonds, you could always do a refunding later, too, like we did with this other one, where you can refinance it somewhere down the road. In fact, this one will almost certainly get refinanced at some point, because we're going to be paying right during the middle of when the Fed is doing, you know, combating inflation by raising up the Fed rate.
Okay.
So if we're taking out the actual bond two years from now, though municipal bonds don't go up the same way, you know, they're not going up .75 at a clip, but they'll be higher. So I would imagine somewhere over a 15 or 17-year life, we're going to see a lower interest rate than what we're going to see when we pay.
So it's fixed for the life of the loan, once we close?
Yes, yeah, usually the interest rates are fixed, and then they can usually be callable at some point.
Is there a fee to refinance?
There was a fee, but I mean, you usually do a calculation, like this last one saved us like $375,000. Yeah, there's definitely fees. You got to pay your bond counsel to write up all the paperwork and all that kind of stuff, but that's, so there are fees involved in it, but I imagine this one will probably get refinanced at some point. That would be my guess. Again, I don't know what, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm going to guess that the interest rates are going to be a little bit higher than what we paid on this last one.
Yeah.
Hold on, it's not, hold on, hold on, it's not public comment yet, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No.
I have none. We're all good?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, we will open up public comment, and if there's any questions, the engineer company's here to address any questions. The gentleman that's sitting over here, he does the press release from Goshen.
And then Armand with design.
I'm sorry.
Armand with design.
Armand with design. So if you have any questions, public comments, feel free to ask him. Dr. Morgano's there, if anything comes up.
Can you use the microphone?
Hold on, we need to use the microphone over there, so it can be.
Which one? Oh, either one, I guess. They're set up to be pretty sensitive.
It's like church. There we go. Hi, my name is Joseph Christ, I live up the hill here, off the road, rather, on 55. I think we're the last house that the track team runs by when they're working out in the afternoons. It's like the swallows come in Capistrano. I know it's fall when I see the track team running up and down the road, so that's all good. I have no problem with the bond issue whatsoever, okay? And I say that as someone who has spent 45 years in the municipal bond business. For those late people, yeah. Caleb didn't say anything I haven't heard of at all. What I was going to add is, part of when you set up the transaction, is you set the terms for when you can call the bonds early, you know, and the time varies. The old standard was 10 years. I know some people are asking for seven, and in some cases even five, but you can get the option, and you'll know what that is upfront. You'll know the price, and you'll know the timing when you can do it. You can usually call the bonds either annually or semi-annually. The real reason I wanted to talk to you guys, when I say it has to do with the bond issue, and you're very concerned with taxes, we're worried about what taxes might be abated in association with the campground development up on 97, because those developers have been very clear that they want to get the maximum tax abatement that they can. But I've also talked to a couple of people from the county, who say that if we can show enough strength and unity and say, yeah, the development's welcome, but we have a school roof to put on, we have kids to take care of, and they say they're going to be long-term players, they don't want to pay taxes on $45 million of new property value for 10 years. Now, depending what numbers you use and whatever, that's, by the time you guys, you know, if you use your rates, if they get, if those taxes get abated, that's probably a full employment position of some kind, at least, every year.
We've been down that road already with an organization in the town.
Do they understand that? Because the company.
And they got their, and they got their 20-year tax abatement, so.
So they're going to get it?
They got it. No, not that organization, another organization in town went in front of the ADI, or IDA, whatever it is, and they got their, they got their tax rate. We squawked about it, we sent people for the public hearing, it's the deal. Not, not to this one down here, a different one?
Okay, no, no, a different one. This one, I just say that because we went to two meetings about it, and they were pretty clear that they were really surprised at the number of people who came out, and they were surprised at the, I guess, tenor of everybody's comments is the nicest way to put it, which is beyond the things about not liking parts of the project. The biggest complaint was about the tax abatement. And so just to the extent that every voice can go to them, whether it comes from an entity like you guys, I don't know. I know things aren't binding, but like pass a resolution or something that lets the people at the IDA and the Economic Development Group and our elected officials know that this is, if they don't pay their taxes, it's not good for the kids. And if, you know, they don't need a water park, they need books and facilities and good stuff like that. And if there's any way other people can help with that, you know, let us know, because they, they want a lot of money, and I think our kids deserve better. So whatever you can do to help us, and if there's something the other way, let us know.
Thank you. Any other public, Mr. Cruz, you're up. Go over there, over to the mic, though, Mr. Cruz. You know, you have to, no, you do, because it's being recorded, and people, public comment, they want to hear what has to be said.
Thank you. All right, my name is Bill Cruz, for those who don't know me, and there aren't too many in here that don't. I started teaching here in the fall of 1971, and at that time, the football team played their games over at Fireman's Field in Yulin on property that partly belonged to the firemen and partly belonged to a private citizen. That'll get more important in a minute. The cross-country team started on Fireman's Field and ran their meets around the neighborhood over there, all right? The girl soccer team played out here. There was no parking lot, no basketball court, no tennis court. That was our athletic field. All right, then, in the wintertime, played basketball in about half of this gym, all right? The substitutes, the scorekeepers sat up on the stage. And one of the criteria for making a basketball team was that you could get up and down off the stage, all right, when it was time to get in the game. Then baseball played over in Yulin, softball played out here, and the track team ran out here. Beginning track season, I would go out personally with a limo and make a line all the way around that field, all right? It wasn't an oval, it was more like a keyhole. And it was about 440 yards at the time, and we ran all our meets out there, all right? So I would go out there, put the line in, put the starting lines in, measure everything, and that's where we ran. The long and triple jump pit was over about where third base is on the softball field. The pole vault, high jumper, out in the middle of the field somewhere. Remember, softball team also played out there, all right? At one point, we had the pole vault pit in the alley between the cafeteria and the gym, because it was paved. Then, a little bit after that, there was a problem with the privately-owned property over there, and the football team couldn't play there anymore because the field wasn't big enough. So then he built a field on somebody's property on the rally road. If you don't know where the rally road is, it's up on the border between Highland and Lumberland, and on one end of the road is Barker Road, on the other end of the road is Rally Road. They were on the Lumberland end, and they played football up there. About the same time, the hill out here was much higher than it is now, much, much higher. And so we ran cross-country. We started down here on the field, ran up and around the mountain, and came back down. Softball, girl soccer was always out here. All right, so then that got to be untenable. We got teams all over the place. So then the superintendent at that point decided that what we could do was to lower the mountain, and we did. We got local excavators to take away the dirt and to lower the mountain. The thing I don't understand is why they stopped where they stopped, all right? Because at the time, I was shown a drawing of what was proposed, and that drawing showed a 440-yard track. It showed a baseball field big enough that the baseball field was where it is now, but out in center field was where the softball field was going to be. Well, that didn't happen, all right? Went up there one time with one of the people involved, he's pointing out there and says, "Look, you got a 440-yard track." I said, "No, you don't." And we had about, if I remember right, 300-yard track, and it cut across the corners of the football field, the corners of the, the outside corners of the football and soccer fields, fields were actually in the middle of the track. And every spring, we would go up there with a limo, draw a circle or an oval around. The only thing better about it was it was an oval. All right? Put in all the lanes, put in all the starting lines, and so on and so forth. All right, then eventually, in the late 70s, that was the late 70s, early 80s, we actually built the athletic fields up there. All right? The storage building, which has come up as a discussion, that was built by Mr. Lombardo and Mr. Monalion, who were the, who worked in the school district as maintenance people. The faculty, the men faculty actually put on the roof as a gesture of goodwill between the faculty and the administration, because there were some hard feelings at that point. Early 2000s, we eventually got what's up there now. All right? Let me tell you a little story about that. And Frank and I were involved in that on almost a daily basis, in the sense that we were watching to see what would happen. All right? We lost the whole track season. We had no place to practice, no place to run. But we kept watching. So one day, I go up there, and the architect is there, and I said to him, that's not going to be 400 meters, is it? He said, no, we don't have room. So I said to him, well, how about we cut away at the bank between the baseball field and what is now the football field track? Take that dirt, put it on the far side, thereby make it wider, and we could have 400 meters. And one of the things, at the time, there was a picture, again, there was a drawing. It showed a 400-meter track. It wasn't oval, it was more oblong. And I know this for a fact, because I remember a conversation I had with Mr. Otasik at the time. He came to me and asked me, is it legal to have an oblong-shaped track? And I said, yes, as long as it's 400 meters. And that was supposed to be what happened. Go up there, look. The architect says, no, you can't do that. You can't have retaining walls. Not legal. So what do I know? All right, walk away. All right, so eventually, they got the track kind of laid out. Frank and I go up there again. For some reason, and I have no idea why he did this, the foreman showed us the plans. All right? Nice plans, nice oval, no long jump pit, no triple jump pit, no pole vault runway, no throwing areas. I don't know how they came to that point to build something and spend all that money, and they didn't have it done. So what did they do to put in those things? Well, they cut away at the bank and put in a retaining wall, which is what I was told they couldn't do. Then eventually, we go up there, it's all done. Frank and I are standing up on the top of the hill, looking at it, and going, those lines aren't right. Oh, yeah. So we go down and tell the powers, oh, yeah, they're right. No, they're not. So we had to go up there with a tape measure and a measuring wheel, and they were wrong. They were all wrong. All right, so the company had to come back. All right, and this is probably one of the reasons this track has failed, is they had to wipe off the lines with a pressure washer. Some poor guy spent a whole day with a pressure washer erasing the lines, and then they came back and put in the new ones. All right, so that's just a little bit of history of how we got to this point. I'd like to see it done right. I mean, this will be the third time it's been done in my adult lifetime that I've been here. I'd like to see it done right. And that's it.
Third time's a charm.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Anybody else, any more public comment? All good? All right. Regular meeting will be, announcements, regular meeting will be held that Thursday, October 13, 2022, 6:00 p.m. at the McKenzie Gymnasium. Location changes because there's a bonfire here that night. At this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Amador. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks all, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you.